Those skill sets in seven different buckets. So it'll be very interesting to see what this is actually going to look like in November. And not only are we going to be able to see what the buckets are and how kids will be able to demonstrate competency in those buckets, but also a timeline for implementation. That seems to be the biggest unknown that's out there at this time. Will it start with the, you know, the class of twenty five, twenty six as freshmen? Or will there be a scaled up version? That's the part we don't know yet. But I think they're purposely going to do it in November because they will be setting their legislative priorities for budget. Like December, January, so they're gonna wanna get into their budget. You know, um, priorities, the impact of this work. So much more to come there as well. They did state that there would be statewide convenings coming soon. I haven't heard about those yet, but they're supposed to be coming soon. And then the big elephant in the room was around regionalization. Um, so they spent some time talking about that. And I've already shared with you a lot of the information that they had shared at that meeting. But basically, they wanted to clarify that the state is only mandating the conversation. They're not mandating any actions at this point. But when you think about the change in foundation, school aid formula, we know that that's happening. The governor also has a committee right now studying school foundation aid. And that committee, I think the last public meeting is this week. And they're going to um, have their report filed with the governor by November. So that when she's developing her budget, she'll be able to make changes based on the recommendations or not. So we've got the changes in foundation aid formula, which is really what on schools. We've got the new graduation uh, requirements that are coming forward. And we have a mandated conversation on regionalization. One could argue that those other two things may make that not just a conversation, right? It's like the perfect storm, like all these pathways are gonna converge at once. So part of this regionalization conversation that's being mandated is that all school districts in New York State have to complete a needs assessment. We were supposed to receive the needs assessment by the end of this month. I don't think that's gonna happen. We have two weeks left in August and we haven't even been told about when it was going to be shared or a meeting that we need to go to to have the information shared with us so that we can complete the needs assessment. But I do know that it's supposed to be completed and submitted to state ed by November first. So we have to get it sooner than later. But it will be very interesting what that needs assessment asks us to identify because you would think it would ask questions about not only your um, your financial status, but where is your district poised to meet the new requirements of a portrait of a graduate? Can you meet those with your current structure or not? And then that goes back to, okay, is this really just a conversation? Or is this an action plan? So much more to come. And as soon as we get that needs assessment, it'll be shared with all of you. But it was um, very clear that they wanted to um, reiterate more than once that they're only mandating a conversation. They're only mandating a conversation, but will the circumstances mandate something else? So.
So with that, we did have the conversation, at least from a regional point of view. Um, back in July, myself with Kelly, we had a meeting with superintendent from Kratsburg, superintendent board, president from Avoca, from Hammond's Board, and Campbell Simona. And Kenneth Steel Greenwood, superintendent, was there just to talk about pretty much everything that Kelly just mentioned. There's just so many unknowns and there's no real true definition of what they mean by regionalization or what that will even look like. But we have at least started a dialogue with uh, neighboring districts, which was a very good conversation. Each district has their own unique challenges, so we'll see where this goes, but that has started.
Yeah, and it hopefully will at least lead to some good change because everybody always talks about regional high schools, regional high schools. There, at this day, there is still no law or regulation that allows for regional high schools to exist. So one good thing that should come about is, you know, a change in regulation, right? That allows for regional high schools to exist and a funding mechanism to support those. Because right now, that's really not an option. Districts can tuition out their students to another district year by year. But there's no legislation for truly a regional high school, which is kind of strange because everybody always talks about, oh, regional high schools, that's what they're saying. And then also it's strange when you think about BOSIs, that's really what BOSIs are. BOSIs are regional high schools, right? We send our juniors and seniors there to get career and technical education for their last two years of high school. That's really what that is, but yet there's no regulation or law that allows that for school districts to provide an experience. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see where, where this all leads.
So a lot of topics coming up here in the fall, so. On the back, yeah.
Just keep swimming, yes.
So, any questions for Kelly from the board? Again, my only note was gonna be the update that we did have that meeting with the other districts back in July. Northerly Committee Reports, um, in your packets was an update on the current Capitol project from the Chase cameras here. We did open the um, box that was found, so the time capsule. A lot of good stuff in the initial time when that building was built back in the sixties, so really a lot of great stuff in there. That'll be fun to share and look through. But any other updates on how things are going? Are we gonna be ready for the start of school year?
Yeah, we'll definitely be ready.
We just met today to discuss that.
Phase one of the children project, actually, good news for once. We got uh, the one piece of electrical here, it's kind of late, show up early unexpectedly. Uh, working with Kelly, we were able to kind of last minute schedule a crane check for August twenty seventh. Um, we get everything in the basement for that. So that'll be nice to get, get some uh, progress moving forward on that. Um, you know, phase two is full steam ahead of these last couple of weeks for data changing rapidly. A lot of finishes going in case we're countertops, um, coming together, so that's good. And then obviously, phase three, we're work contracts, we have a kickoff meeting. Trying to work, maybe a little early start here in the next two weeks before school starts, try to do things done. And then we talked about that meeting, we're in the playground contracts night. Still waiting for the revised polls to come back, uh, for some of the exclusions there. So we'll have those for the next four days.
Questions from the board? It'd be nice to see BW once all finished and ready to go.
Our next board meetings there in September, yeah, so.
Thank you, Karen. Um, take a, any questions on any of the reports that were in packets in the administrative? Um, taking a motion to approve the recommendations from Kidney on special education. Right, this is Jared. Second by Mr. Krasinski, any questions there? All in favor? That carries seven zero. And last report this evening, we'll just get an update on the graduation data and region results from Mr. Harrison.
Well, thank you, and November should be a week. Uh, state ed likes to talk about a lot of things, but you guys are pretty much alive. Uh, so just looking at um, this year's graduation, uh, they gave them into some uh, regions results and then take up too much time. Uh, and this could look very different as I was looking through with the picture of the graduate uh, moving forward. So this uh, past year, we had ninety-four graduates. Um, sort of broken down with uh, regions diplomas, those with CT endorsements and without CT uh, endorsements. And then getting into the uh, diplomas with advanced designations. Obviously, there's a lot of different types of regions diplomas you can get. Um, and it really just breaks it down into uh, for those who have mastery, you know, getting eighty-five or higher on all of their uh, regions of gambling or to path or science, uh, and then the CT endorsements and all of that. Uh, then we had uh, three local diplomas with a CDOs. So if you look at our uh, twenty twenty cohort data and uh, as Mike, you know, Mike and I, Mike Seabird and I met a lot as he was sort of transitioning out. And he knew that this was gonna be a tough year just because twenty twenty was the pandemic and there was a number of kids who had dropped out during that. So he was a little concerned of where we were gonna be at. Uh, when I gave my initial uh, information to Kelly about graduation rates, this is kind of where we thought we were gonna be. Um, if you look at it, there were a hundred and eleven uh, in the initial cohort. We graduated ninety-four with a region diploma. Uh, so our graduation rate is actually like eighty-three point seventy-four, but the state doesn't recognize those with a local diploma. We talked about this last year as well. Um, so they were, you know, individuals who didn't pass regions and dams, uh, were given a local exemption from the superintendent. Uh, so that brought us down to ninety-one, uh, which gave us a graduation rate of eighty-one point nine. Uh, we do have, and again, if you dive into these numbers a little bit more, uh, we do have two of the three who didn't graduate, uh, should graduate come August, so that will help. Uh, one already has completed everything he needs to do. Another one uh, has just a week to finish up a couple of things for her English twelfth class. Um, you look at the um, those who are in life skills classes, um, individuals who are multiply disabled. We actually got one student who and I've been going back and forth with Randy on this. We had a student who finished everything that they needed to with Florida, moved up here enrolled into this class, and then that went into our cohort as well. And they were not gonna count toward it. So even though they had graduated with what Florida would consider a diploma, when they came up here, it wasn't recognized. Uh, so that as well, again, when you're looking at, you know, class size of a hundred, every student's one percent. So, kind of how it looked, yeah. So I do anticipate that graduation rate coming up a little bit uh, come August. So future plans? Uh, four-year college, eighteen, we're eighteen individuals, we're looking at that for next year. Two-year college, thirty-six, and then it goes into other post-secondary schools, military employment. And I think it was uh, Jen last year, you were kind of asking about the trends for our students going to college. So uh, Randy sent this uh, report to me from National Student Clearinghouse that sort of tracks it from two thousand sixteen, the two thousand sixteen cohort to the twenty twenty-three cohort. So you can see that we're going anywhere from sixty-two percent to uh, thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent going to college. You know, one of the first conversations Kelly and I had was kind of looking at how are we providing those students who aren't necessarily in ACE or in CTE with uh, beneficial experiences? And that's where that work-based learning coordinator position is coming from. We are uh, super excited about that. Uh, the individual we have has come with a wealth of knowledge from Dundee as a counselor. So she's already uh, talked with uh, Mr. Gallagher and Mrs. Wolf about a number of things that um, they did in the fingerless BOSIs that might make their jobs a little bit easier. So not only is she gonna be valuable for that position, uh, but also valuable for just another resource in our counseling office. So really excited about that. This summer, uh, just breaking down the number of students that we had going to summer school. Uh, grades are just coming in. Looks like we're gonna be pretty successful uh, with that in terms of students getting credit. Uh, and then we've got regions exams next Monday and Tuesday. So hopefully, you know, it was a bit of a challenge when uh, they came out with saying that, and it was kind of misinterpreted, I think. Uh, that we're not gonna need to pass regions exam anymore. They came out in early June. And uh, well, I think we have some individuals who and families in the crowd, we have been calling the counseling office, asking why do they have to pass regions exams when uh, state ed has said that no longer has to occur. So uh, it's kind of uh, getting back into reminding them that nothing has changed, that we still have responsibilities uh, in terms of passing those regions and dams. So um, that's gonna be something that we touch on, especially with the the freshman class this year, because we're gonna come out with that in November. But as Kelly alluded to, we don't necessarily know when these changes are gonna take place. So um, trying to educate families on what it is that they're gonna need for graduation. And then um, driver's education is gonna complete, uh, actually just finished today. Uh, twenty-four individuals will get their certificates for that. There's a breakdown of the number of students from each grade on whether they receive that. Before I go into regions, yeah, is there any questions? Are there any questions?
The uh, the people that dropped out, the kids that dropped out. Where, where did they go? What did they do? Let me, do we have any visibility on that?
Once they drop out, uh, and Randy, you might be able to speak to us a little bit more. We have, it's kind of difficult for us to sort of figure out where they are at this point. They may be in town, they may have left the district. Um, they can't necessarily go for their GED until after their cohort is graduated, unless they haven't been enrolled at a school for a year. So um, there's a lot of different variables that are associated with that. So I'm not exactly sure where they are. I don't know as though we have a way of tracking what the, you know, when a student drops out, where they would, where they were based.
They have different reason codes why they make it drop out. Twenty days to second, that's just not, that's just anymore. And they just come and say, I'm dropping out of the, they may have different reason codes, but really go after them. There are some that may drop out, won't get several of these this year, dropped out this year. I've been back like here and trying to get next year. So hopefully by the time it'll be, you know, and it's late out there, hopefully it's a little bit better. On the first, right?
Any other question?
Good report, thank you for submitting that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, and then this is, I'm not gonna go into um, detail on every slide, you can, you can look at the data and sort of get an idea of where we're going. You know, I'll point out the uh, the very top one. Um, Tuesday, I had a great conversation with the math teachers today. Randy was, I'm more excited to be there than be there uh, Tuesday or myself because they started talking about math concepts and I looked at her and just we sat there because I wasn't quite sure what they were talking about. So good for them for being able to do that. Uh, we looked at, you know, algebra, geometry, and I started a little bit on algebra too. But uh, the reason I'm pointing out the algebra one, this is a random exam this year, first time we've taken it. So they've been working towards the next gen standards and doing a few things. So um, seventy-nine percent, you know, when we look at how our students did, not only across our GST BOSIs, but we also have some data that compares it to uh, the rest of the state minus the big five. We um, really acted out of park, like we were significantly stronger uh, in most areas, I would say. If we had thirty-two standards we were looking at, I think there was five maybe where we were below the state average. Uh, so, you know, they did, they did a phenomenal job. Um, you know, global two, you know, we've been, we're gonna meet with ELA again next week to talk about their data and some things. We're not, you know, global, global and US history, we met um, last spring, uh, they had some new exams, US history started a new exam last uh, June, so just starting to collect that data and really analyzing kind of where it is that we need to move to get our kids up the ladder a little bit higher. So um, a lot of good things going on. Again, you know, uh, really questioning and attending, that was one of the things we thought with our math teachers today about is, you know, when you get into the critical response, how do we take a kid that didn't get any points and get them to a one? Because that could be the difference, not only from passing, but getting up from uh, below mastery to mastery. So, you know, just identifying some of those areas where, what is it that we can do to just push them a little bit to achieve a little bit higher, so. A lot of good stuff through our conversations, but I and then I just went through each of the exams. Again, you've got all this in your report, just to give you an idea of the last few years, where we were in terms of passing percentages and mastery percentages. So the previous slides show all the exams from this year. And then um, the correspondent is uh, slide will go into uh, the last few years. Again, lots of, lots of good numbers, uh, US history. We just started last year with that new exam. And then one other one was for the science, I had some trouble finding that data. But the rest of it's really going back through years um, to where we were um, and just kind of comparing. And there's our graduation rate by cohort. So again, you know, that portrait, photograph of a graduate is talking a lot about regions exams and whether testing is gonna be necessary or the the ultimate parameter for student success. But I think us bringing in our work-based learning coordinators just gonna do so much to sort of give our kids that next piece, so really excited about that.
It'll be extremely interesting because the regions exams will still be an option for kids to prove competency in those buckets. Like that can be one pathway that a child um, uh, elects to do, right? It could be a capstone project, it could be um, a lot of different things that they could do. But it'll be interesting to see how many kids actually choose to take an exam versus do, doing something else. As much as it will be how they perform, right? Like what is going to be the percentage of students that choose that pathway?
Yeah, we've started to work on our seal of biodiversity, seal of civic readiness. We had a conversation with the art teacher today, there's actually another seal of art. And you can't, nobody can remember what the name of it was. Yeah, art and culture, there's something. So, you know, everybody will get, you know, will receive that diploma, but you might have some with fourteen or fifteen different seals on it. I don't know how we're gonna figure out where all these stickers.
Stickers go, that's right.
But, you know, that's something that uh, Tim and Lindsay and I have already talked about, like, we're gonna have a hundred kids in a grade level, we're gonna graduate, and we're gonna have one hundred different pathways.
That's right. And even like our community service requirement right now will have to be a endorsement.
Right.
It won't be a requirement. Yeah, it'll be a sticker. But it can't be a requirement, yes. Because all they need to do, everyone gets a diploma as long as they've met competencies in those seven buckets. The additional things that they do above and beyond are those seals, such as community service.
So about eleven by seventeen.
It'll be a very large diploma, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Um, business consent agenda, taking a motion, all that's in your packet, we'll take a motion to approve that. All right, motion by, I don't know what you're, but this is Jared, I'm second by Mrs. McKinley, question?
I do. I prefer the parents of the park at the um, D L L, whole school parent handbook that I just would like to revisit at least.
It didn't get updated accordingly.
Didn't get updated appropriately.
The code of conduct section um, regarding dress code does not reflect our new code of conduct dress code that we had already approved. Yes, yeah. So I will work with Jen tomorrow to get that updated. So know if you are approving it, it is with that modification, yes.
And then
And then I can send it to you in an update.
Okay. I mean, some good news, I thought, with the tax rate, which I'm kind of happy with. Is that the levy went out for two percent increase, but the rate is actually below that. It's one-ish thing, so. Turned out positive for all of us. Um, so we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? Here's seven zero. Um, in your packets as well as a recommendation to approve the contract with Staben County Office of the Sheriff for the School Resource Officer for this coming year. Okay, motion, motion by Mr. Jared, I'm second by Mr. Ward. Anything you want to highlight on that?
No, we're just really grateful for the work that they did on our behalf to secure a second SRO for this upcoming school year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, very happy.
Any other questions on that? All voted, we wind up secure.
Danny Radburn. Yep, so.
Any other questions? All in favor? Here is seven zero. Taking a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Laverty. Second by Mrs. Jared, any questions? All in favor? Extension, so that'll be six oh one with an extension due to conflict in that personnel consent. And here is six zero one. Right, instructional appointments, there's just one uh, recommended professional appointment. And as for Caitlin White, the area of special education. Information is in your packet, we'll take a motion to approve that recommendation. By Mrs. Cleveland, second by Mr. Krasinski. All in favor? Right now, there is seven zero. We have just a couple of instructional resignations. There's no objections, we can do these as consent, but I will read them off. Um, the first is from Mary Kegel, is a teaching assistant in the middle school. And that resignation would be effective July thirtieth. And then Kristen Williams um, was resigning as special education teacher in BW, and that's effective the sixteenth of August. Take a motion to approve those by Krasinski, second by Mr. Ward. Any questions?
Wish them both well. Mary has decided to stay home with a new baby, so that's a great decision. And Kristen is starting her first administrative job. She's the new director of Spade at Avoca, so we wish her well.
Um, you know, we have to fill both positions.
We are completely a hundred percent full at this point, after that last year. So that can, we are good.
Other question? Question, all in favor? And that carries seven zero. Uh, there is one uh, recommendation for instructional termination. And as of probationary employee, employee number nineteen seventy-seven, the rest of that resolution is in your packets. Take a motion to approve that. By Mr. Laverty, second by Mr. Ward. All in favor? Carry seven zero. In your packets as well as some recommendations for non-instructional permanent appointments. There's no objections, we can do these as consent and things. Right, uh, first is recommendation of Jesse Gardner as a bus driver. Um, Jamie Schaefer is assistant cook, Brittany Potter is teacher aide, and Dominic is a teacher aide, Emily and Lauren is cleaner, and Jada Roke is a cleaner. So they've all met the requirements for permanent appointment and are being recommended. We have a motion by Mrs. Cleveland to approve, the second by Mrs. Krasinski. Any questions? All in favor? That carries seven zero. And then we have some recommendations for probationary appointments. Again, if there's an objection, we can do these as consent. Okay, the first is recommendation for Tracy Nichols is an assistant cook. Rebecca Van Sicles is food service help. Rhonda Grant is food service help, and Councilance Brewer is food service help. Motion to approve those, by Mrs. Kinley, second by Mr. Jared. All in favor? And that carries seven zero. And then lastly, we have one non-instructional resignation. And that is from Melinda Yarker, Yarka, sorry, as a teacher aide in BEW, now for the effective August sixth. Motion to approve that by Mrs. Krasinski, second by Mr. Laverty. All in favor? Here is seven zero. How do we get them all?
Got them all.
All right. Now we'll open the floor to the public um, comments, questions, like, hey? So if you don't mind, just, so we have for the minutes, just state your name.
Sure.
Okay?
Um, I guess the um, city of West Austin. We were told that our children, one being happy and one drop off, and one pick up for the entire week. For our family, that's impossible. We both work out of town. We need a sunburn more, don't go home without the four o'clock. Uh, daycare in this town, there's a children's high, four are available. And then without some sort of either after-school activity or something that is supposed to do, you gotta have some sort of flexibility, uh, allowing our children to get on and off. Um, even if they get assessed and, and bored with the one location. I don't know if we can do all that.
I, I don't think you and I have met or spoke about this, so I'd like to speak to you about it. If you don't mind, we could set up a time tomorrow for me to call you. And then we can go from there. And I also want to make sure that you are aware of the after-school programming offering um, through the YMCA. I don't know if you know about that or not, so I want to make sure you have all the information available to you because they just received a very significant grant that makes the program free or close to free, meaning no more than twenty dollars a week. So um, I'd like to talk to you about that tomorrow. So before you leave, let me get your number and I'll call you tomorrow. Okay?
Yeah, and if you still have questions, concerns, you can certainly, speaking to the superintendent.
Yeah, we hear you, yep. Let's, let's talk tomorrow and I'm confident we'll come up with a solution. Yeah, we hear you, yep, let's, let's talk tomorrow, and I'm confident we'll come up with a solution.
Yeah, and thank you, by the way, for coming and sitting through everything and
Hopefully it was worth your while, the updates.
Um, we don't have to go into an executive session, but before we adjourn. Jardim. Is putting in so unfortunately, Mrs. Jardim has to resign, she has a letter drafted up that she will be submitting, but we do need to act on that.
And then this will be your last meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not able to make it through September.
Just so that we have it right.
Yeah, okay, this will be my last meeting, unfortunately, so thank you for one, it's been an absolute pleasure. Twelve plus years, it's right around there. Um, but my work is uh, really just taking me so far away locally, it makes it very difficult to contribute what I need to be able to contribute and what this board deserves, but you're in great hands. And no doubt, we're gonna continue to do great things.
Yeah, well, thank you, I'm the board in the district for all of years, yeah, thirteen years of service.
It's pretty incredible.
Yeah, it's we're gonna miss you, we're really gonna miss you.
Yeah, and I wanna thank, yeah, I wanna thank you too, not only for your service, but for all the assistance and the support you've given me in my first year, I really appreciate it.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you. I feel bad we don't have a cake or anything. There you go, but, but know that we sell, yeah, but know that we celebrate you, we really do, so thank you.
The thankless job sometimes, but yeah, contribute a lot. With that, we'll take the motion to approve resignation of Jenny Jardim as a board member, um, you, I believe have three years, a little over two years left in your term, so again, what we, I think we had discussed that this would happen. We'll continue to look for a former board member just to fill out the, the portion of the term until the election in May. And so in May, there would be two seats up. Um, there would be the full year term for, for Dr. Narby, which would be five years, starting really after the election. And then the remaining term for, for Mrs. Jardim. I don't want to move that, so. All in favor? Good vote, no.
Thank you, that
I may be back some day.
I think we've got everything tonight, so our next meeting will be September
eleventh, is that right?
We are gonna be in the BEW, so probably be I think usually we start a little earlier to do a new staff reception, and we'll probably take a little tour of the, all the improvements there. So with that, we'll adjourn, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion by Mr. Laverty? Second by Mrs. Jardim, all in favor of adjourn, seven zero, thank you again for coming, everybody, tonight, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.